You gave us today our daily bread and you gave us our trespasses as we defeat those who trespass against us and believe us not in temptation but deliver us to evil who adimes the kingdom and the power and glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This begins the February 2nd, 2016 legislative session of Wycomico County Council. In trouble hearing this?
Yeah.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of legislative minutes from January 19th, 2016, the open work session with a discussion for letters of support, entertain a motion to accept these, to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion or corrections? Seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 19th, 2016, work session on capital improvement budget program.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, corrections? Seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the work session minutes from January 19th, 2016 on the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions, corrections? Seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the work session minutes, January 19th, 2016, in discussion with Board of Education.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, corrections? Seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes, January 19th, 2016, with the evaluation of fire service system.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. And entertain a motion to approve the work session minutes from January 19th in reference to land acquisition.
So moved.
Second?
Any corrections? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Mr. Kramer, we did that in four minutes.
Congratulations, Mr. President. Very expeditious. First item for your attention this evening is a presentation by Dr. Ray Hoy from president of Warwick Community College on the subject of college tuition grants. Dr. Hoy?
Good evening, Dr. Hoy, how are you?
Good evening, I promise you I won't be able to do this in four minutes. Sorry, but you did a great job earlier. I like to see you all.
Good to see you. Thank you all for taking time tonight to hear this. When I was elected back in 2014, I had a plan that I wanted to try to develop to help students of Wycomico County become available for college, make the college available to them. And Warwick is a beautiful community college, as well as we have a great asset out there within Wycomico County. So I went to Dr. Hoy to try to explain what I wanted to do and it didn't get off the ground the first couple of months or so, but after the last couple of months, we've started working on it very diligently in the last six months or so, and trying to come up with a plan that would not only help the students and the people of Wycomico County, but also help Wycomico County and its economic development. We've all said, and we got elected on the fact that we're here to help economic development. And one of the greatest assets we can do in economic development is to have a well-trained, well-educated workforce, and this is what we're trying to do. Over the Mako meetings, I had the opportunity to speak to Garrett County representatives and Allegheny representative, which had started this program some time ago, and it's turned out beautifully. They say it's one of the greatest assets that they have done economically for their counties. What I hope to do, and Dr. Hoy will explain a little bit more to you about it, this is going to be in our budget this year to present to you all on how to fund this. And we hope to work with you very closely on that. We're welcome to take any questions, but tonight, I would like Dr. Hoy to tell you some of the prerequisites, what we need to have to make this work, and what benefits he feels that it will do to Wycomico County. So, thank you all again for your time.
Thank you. Okay, if I start right in?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for this opportunity to share this program with you. And as Mr. Culver mentioned, we do have programs already in place in the state of Maryland, Garrett County's programs about 10 years old. So we use that as a model for this particular program. We also have a model next door in Delaware with the Delaware Seed Program. I'll talk about both of those as we move forward, but let me just start with the PowerPoint. A little background, we do have a problem. It's a national problem, it's a state problem, it's a local problem. Nationally, between 1900 and 1980, every generation born in U.S. had about two years more of education than the one before. And that was great, but it stopped around 1980. The United States was first in the world in college attainment in the 70s when I went to college, but today we rank 14th in the world in college attainment. The next slide will show you some of the moves here. What's happened is, the United States hasn't moved at all, and all these other countries have had an incredible move. Korea, which is now the number one country in the world in terms of education, it's about 68%, was about 12% in the 70s. Age 55 to 64, that would have been, they would have been in the 70s during that period of time. So, we've fallen over the years. In fact, when I first started talking about this, we were 10th in the world. We dropped to 16th, we've jumped back up to 14th because of some work that's taken place. At our local level, Wycomico County currently, 35% of our population, age 25 to 64, the working age population, has an associate's degree or higher. You can see on the lower shore, low of 18% in Somerset County, Worcester County's at 37%. But the state average is 46%, and the state's goal is 55% by 2025. So, the state, we're moving to that, and we've made progress. That's good news. We've made progress moving from 31% to 35%, but we've got a ways to go to be competitive with our state and certainly with the state's goal. So, we need to raise the level of education in our community so our businesses can be competitive. We want to help our existing businesses, and we want to help recruit new businesses. And in order to do so, we need an educated workforce. And I've always said that I believe the most important resource is a human resource. I know you can't do certain things without resources, but human resource, the people, are what make businesses run. So, here's part of the problem. During the recession, four out of five jobs that were lost were those requiring a high school diploma or less. And those jobs are never coming back. Four out of five of the jobs that were lost were people that had a high school diploma or less. And what's taken the place of that are middle skills jobs. And middle skills jobs require education beyond high school, but not quite a four-year degree. They make up the largest part of the labor market in the United States and in each of the 50 states. Not just, every single state in the United States now has more middle skills jobs than any other jobs available. Industries can't find enough sufficiently trained workers to fill these jobs. So, the skills gap keeps the economy from growing, it keeps employers from hiring. Currently in Maryland, we have 138,000 unfilled jobs, and 1,000 in our local community. And the reason we have these unfilled jobs is, the skills of the workforce do not align with the requirements of these particular jobs. So, this is a very interesting graph, I have a laser pointer here, but one of the things you'll note here is, high skilled workers in Maryland, we have a lot of high skilled workers, but we don't have as many jobs. Low skill workers, we've got a lot of low skill workers, not as many jobs, but middle skill workers, about 38% of our workforce are middle skilled, skills set, but almost 48% require, the jobs require the middle skills, skills that can be available through a community college. So, we need to get these people, get their skills aligned. The Georgetown University Center for Education and Workforce says that by 2020, 65% of all jobs in the United States are going to require post-secondary education training up from 28% in 1973. It's a real changing dynamic here that we're looking at. So, the point is, we offer these types of training, we offer these types of programs that can prepare people for the jobs that exist in our community today. Another issue is the economy. And in terms of economics, FARM stands for free and reduced meals. 61% of the children in public schools in Wycomico County qualify for free and reduced meals. That standard is 185% of the poverty threshold, or with a family of four, $44,865. So, they qualify for free and reduced meals. In Somerset, it's 70%, in Worcester County, it's 45%, statewide, it's 46% today. So why is that important? Well, low income students don't complete college. You have to do more to help them complete college. If you're a high income, if you're from a high income family, you're 79% likely to graduate from college by age 24, but if you're in the lowest income quartile, you're only 11% likely. So you're seven times more likely if you come from a more well-to-do family. What I'm trying to do here is share some cost comparisons, and the top line is the income in 1974. 1974, the average income was 13,000, a home was 36,000, a car was 4,400, private college was 2,000, public college was 500. I was in college in 1974. In fact, when I went to graduate school at Johns Hopkins in 1976, my tuition was $45 a credit hour. A little different today, very much different. I bought a house in 1977, it cost 36,500. I'm just relating to some of these numbers. Now, in 2015, if you adjust the costs, from 1974, if you adjust those costs in inflation-adjusted prices to 2015, that 13,000 becomes 62, 36,000 becomes 174, 4,400 becomes 21,300. The private education goes to 10,300, and public education from 500 to 2,500. The last line is, the last line, actual line, income is about 1% different from, adjusted for inflation, the average income. Home prices, 9% ahead. If we went pre-bubble burst in 2008, it would probably have been higher, but it's 9% today. Car prices have gone up, we can probably thank Ralph Nader for that because of all the safety devices that we have on vehicles today, but some of those things are saving our lives, so that's not so bad. But that's really what boosted car prices. Then we get to education. Private education's gone up 201%, and public education's gone up 260%. You hear politicians and others decrying the high cost of education all the time. The reason for the high cost of education is government spending. Public spending on higher education has been reduced significantly, and this is just a graph of what's happened at Warwick. In 1980, the state participated in the funding of our students 53%. Today, it's 30%. Local government participated 25%, today it's 19%. So who makes up the difference? The students have gone from 21% to 48%. Go ahead, John.
On the previous graph, is the 260%, are you saying that's the cost, the 201% and the 260%, are you saying those are the costs?
Higher education has increased. That's the cost to parents, that's the cost to students, that's tuition cost.
So if you consider what the government has put into that formula, does this go even higher now?
No, this is what it is today to them, but the reason it's gone up so much is because government has taken money out. Government's not funding the way they did previously. And that's really been the most significant factor in the cost of higher education is reduction of federal, state, and local funds. There's other costs like technology. Technology changes have been incredible, and those costs affected, there's no question about that. But the biggest, the most significant impact has been the reduction in public funding, and it has caused individuals to pay more for their education.
So it's not the cost of college itself, it's just the cost of college to the family?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Again, there are other costs that have increased, so we've increased higher than the cost of inflation, but public funding reductions have caused that. And everybody says, well, wait a minute, how's I explain private institutions? Well, private institutions get public funding. Private institutions in the state of Maryland get public funding, so we have to deal with those types of issues.
Good.
Okay, now, what else, what happened at the federal level is, federal financial aid in 1980, '79, '80 paid 99%, virtually all of a community college education cost. Today, it's 52%. So the costs have gone up, and the funding from the federal government has dropped during that period of time. And you see what's happened to public four-years and also in privates. So, Maryland poor and working-class families, according to the University of Maryland School for Social Work, they did a study four years ago, and they said Maryland poor and working-class families have to devote 33% of their income after all financial aid in order to pay for two-year college. Well, the poor and working-class families don't have discretionary income, so what happens is these kids don't graduate from college. They start, but they don't finish. At Warwick, only 41% of student need is met, and of that, 25% is met through student loans. And we hear a lot about student loans. In the state of Maryland today, $118 million is borrowed annually from Maryland Community College students. It's a $1.3 trillion U.S. problem, and cost is the number one reason students drop out of school. This past year, the 2015 graduating class, the average student loan debt was 34,200. And if you think those kids graduate from college, get a job immediately, and can buy a house and a car, they can't. That's the problem, because they're carrying too much debt. So we're trying to do some debt avoidance here. Only one in four low-income students that need developmental education is able to graduate from college, whereas upper-income students have 50% chance of graduating regardless of their academic talent. And 80% of our students require some developmental education, so they're behind the eight ball when they start, economically and academically in this case. So, the college completion challenge, if we're going to meet this 55% goal in the state of Maryland, the completion challenge is, college costs have risen, students need more support, funding's been reduced, and student aid's gone down. It's not a good formula for success, frankly. Causes lots of issues. So, solution that we're proposing is that, prepare more educated and trained individuals for our workforce to support local business, helping our residents earn a college degree. That reduces the brain drain. Community college students stay in the community. They stay in our community. 90% of our students stay in the community, even after they go on and earn baccalaureate, masters, and doctorate degrees, they come back in the community. So we're reducing the brain drain by initiative like this. We're getting more people into the pipeline. You educate and train more residents to enter the workforce in good-paying jobs, that's going to sustain our quality of life, that's going to have an economic spin, an economic value, and it's going to make a huge difference. Jamie Marisodis, who is the president and CEO of Lumina Foundation, Lumina Foundation is one of the biggest research entities and funders to higher education in terms of grant, says that research shows a direct correlation between thriving communities, he said cities, and high levels of college-level learning. Regions with robust levels of education attainment have stronger economies, greater individual earning power, and better quality of life. I mean, that's what we're looking for. Lumina Foundation also says that community colleges are where higher education credentials align with local workforce needs. So, we get a stronger economy, we have greater individual earning power, and a better quality of life for everyone. The benefit to the community is that educated populations are healthier, they're more stable, they're less likely to have instances of absenteeism, less alcohol and drug abuse, less smoking-related illnesses, lower probability of committing crime, and welfare and unemployment claims are reduced. Workers with a post-secondary education earn 74% more than workers with a high school diploma or less, and that wage premium goes up to 82% if you're talking about full-time year-round jobs. So, it is a personal benefit, higher education is a personal benefit, nobody's ever denying that, but it's also a public benefit, because workers with higher education are more productive. So they earn more money, they pay more taxes, they make their companies more profitable, and the overall economy grows even faster. 90% of our students stay in the community, as I mentioned. Taxpayers currently realize 11.5% rate of return for every state and local tax dollar invested in Warwick. And our annual economic spend is $149 million, even though our budget's only about $24 million. And that's because of the training that's in the workforce in our community today. They're out there earning money and helping our businesses to be successful. We have a couple of videos here, but in order to get to that, it looks like, oh, okay. I am going to do this real quick.
We didn't have.
You couldn't get it, I know. All right, let's start with this one. You guys might recognize this individual. Ah, no volume.
And I received an incredible invitation, an incredible invitation that allowed me to bring more into my academic, academic.
I'm probably the only one.
Can't hear.
No.
All right. I'm going to have to skip these, sorry about that.
Sorry.
All right, Matt, I got to get rid of you. All right, back to, from current slide, and I'll skip, but Matt's message is essentially that he wouldn't be able to be here, live here, work here, in Wycomico County, if he hadn't started at Warwick.
You're talking about Matt Masorello?
Matt Masorello. He started at Warwick, he transferred to Salisbury University, then went on to law school, but he didn't have to take out a lot of debt and a lot of loans. And if he had, he wouldn't have been able to come back here. He probably would have had to go someplace else where he would have been able to make more money and stay there, rather than moving home. So, the point being, our graduates are here, they're in the community, and they're doing the jobs that we need for our community. But what are other communities doing? Well, I mentioned some of the communities that are doing this, but this map shows you other communities, states, and cities, and counties that have adopted programs like this. I'm going to specifically look at four, six. On the right-hand side, you have three, four, three state plans in Delaware. I mentioned that's been in place for 10 years. Graduates of any Delaware high school can attend Delaware Technical Community College or the University of Delaware Parallel Program on the Del Tech campuses, and the tuition is covered by the state for those students for two years. They have three years to make two in order to, they have to attend full-time, and they have to maintain a 2.5 grade point average in Delaware, and they have to have a 2.5 grade point average in order to get into the program. Tennessee, the state of Tennessee just adopted this program a year ago, they started this past fall, very similar program, little tweaks, difference. Oregon just passed it this year, it's going to start next year. Garrett College in Maryland, smallest, one of the smallest counties in the state of Maryland, it might be the smallest, I'm not sure. Garrett County Scholarship Program began 10 years ago, and as Mr. Culver mentioned, he talked actually to the architect of this plan. The gentleman was the Economic Development Director for Garrett County at the time, and he came forward and said, if we're going to improve the economy of our community, we're going to have to improve the education levels of the people, the citizens of this community. And they initiated a program whereby every Garrett College, Garrett High School graduate could go to Garrett College, their community college, for three years to make a two-year degree, and they paid their way through school. And it's been a great and successful program for them. I think it's Jim Heim, Heimbl, yeah. He's currently a county commissioner there, and still wholeheartedly endorses this program. So he was Economic Development Director, now he's County Commissioner, but he just thinks this is the best thing since sliced bread and bread. Allegheny College began it this year. Their program's just a little bit different, they're using their slot money from Rocky Gap, they can use it for community welfare, and they decided to put it into scholarship program for residents of Allegheny High Schools. And they began this program as well. Howard Community College has the Pathway Scholarship Program, a little bit different, but same, similar results. They've capped it, and they're doing, making some marvelous opportunities for their citizens. So what's this program look like for us? Well, we would cover tuition and fees, not books, for all eligible high school graduates in Wycomico County. That also extends to Delmar. I've got a slide that gives you more details here. In, so they have to be a Wycomico resident for the past two years, be a Wycomico High School graduate or graduate from Delmar High School, earn a degree or certificate program, enroll in a degree or certificate program at Warwick, apply for and accept all other financial aid. That's a key piece to all of these programs. It's last dollar funding. So they have to apply for aid, and this is gap funding for the rest, or last dollar funding. They have to be full-time, because students who are full-time are more likely to graduate, and they're going to graduate on time. And they have to register for at least 12 credits immediately, the year immediately after their high school graduation, in order to maintain, yes, that.
Do you have a figure for how many eligible Wycomico and Delmar students?
Well, yeah, we, I've done some calculations, which I'll share to you, in terms of what we currently have and what we anticipate. So I'm going to get to that in just a moment. I'll give you the final details on the eligibility, and then I'll share that data and how we, how we came up with the dollar figures. So they've got to maintain a 2.0 grade point average while they're in school, they have to continue attending full-time, and they have up to six continuous fall and spring semesters in order to earn their degree. And anybody who took dual enrollment while they were in high school, they'll get that reimbursed, the tuition and fees part reimbursed, after their successful first term at Warwick, completing the 12 credits. The reason we want to do that is so we don't disincentive activity in dual enrollment, because students who are, enroll in dual enrollment programs are more likely to graduate from high school, they're more likely to go to college, they're more likely to graduate from college, and they're going to get through quicker, and the dual enrollment classes are actually less expensive for the county or for the parents to pay for. And it's college credit that they can take anywhere. So, Larry, to your point about, well, how did we come up with these determinations? Well, we looked at what's happened in other areas that have introduced these programs, and we calculated a 15% increase in the number of high school graduates attending Warwick right after graduation. We projected 83% of those students who come will attend full-time, some will still attend part-time, they won't be eligible. Currently, it's a 65%, so we projected an increase there. And we said that 59% will receive federal financial aid covering the full tuition and fees. Currently, we're at 59%. Now, I'll tell you, in the other communities that have done this, their percent of student population receiving financial aid has escalated. So we think we've underestimated this here, but we didn't want to overstate, we didn't want to underfund it. But we really think that there's a margin here, because I remember when Garrett introduced their program, they were in the middle of the pack among the 16 community colleges in terms of percent of their student population on financial aid, Pell Financial Aid, and when they introduced this and mandated that everybody who's going to, who's going to do this has to apply for financial aid, that percentage went up, and they're number two in the state in the percent of population with financial aid. It's not because the economy tanked, it's because they had to apply, and they finished the application process. So, our estimated county investment is about 252,000 in year one, that's based on 27 credits. So, some students will take 15 a semester, some students will take the minimum 12, but we estimated, a little high, 27 credits. In year two, that's the year one students, moving on to year two, and a new first-year class, it goes to 540,000, and in year three, at 665,000, that's based on a new first-year class, the returning second-year class from year two, and the stragglers who are completing their third year of the program. And that's kind of where it caps out, other than inflational costs for tuition increases and things like that. We're looking at about an annual cost of about $665,000 a year to make this program workable. Some people have asked me, well, what about, what's going to happen to our, you know, local universities if we do something like this? Well, what, it's important to understand that 2/3 of the students in the university system of Maryland institutions, that's College Park through Salisbury, Yumme S., Towson Bowie, Frostburg, Coppin, those institutions, 33,000 transfer students are accepted annually at those institutions. 2/3 of their students are transfer students. And they accept more transfer students than freshmen in the last two years. They've transitioned to accepting more fresh, more transfers than freshman students at the university systems of Maryland.
Transfers from other colleges?
Yeah.
Community colleges?
Both. Students move around, there's no question about it, but the lion's share of them are transfers from community colleges. And just so you understand, Maryland's community colleges actually enrolled 74% of all freshman and sophomore students in Maryland higher education. So that's where they're transferring on to the four-year institutions, once they complete, those that go on to four-year institutions. Regarding SU in particular, they're right down the street, and we're wonderful partners with SU. We actually are their principal feeder school. We transfer more students there than any other institution. They have a selective admissions process. They had 8,360 applications this year for 1,189 slots. And only about 30% of SU students, both graduate and undergraduate, are from the eastern shore, and that's all eight counties, not just the lower shore. So, actually what we're doing is putting more people in the pipeline that will probably transfer to SU, because that's the cycle that goes on, and that's the model that the new chancellor has adopted for the university system, that they want students to start a community college and transfer to four-year institutions, because it saves the state money, it saves the families' money, and it saves counties' money. It's a less expensive approach to higher education, and as he'll tell you, Bob Corret, the chancellor, will tell you, community college graduates who transfer on to four-year schools are more likely to graduate than somebody who starts there. They're more successful. So they like the transfer students. So what this is all about is creating a college-going culture in our community. It's supporting kids from pre-kindergarten through college graduation. We don't want to stop with a high school graduation, we want to continue through college. We'd like to strengthen the dual enrollment programs in the high schools, so kids are taking college courses while they're there. Better alignment of educational pathways from high school through college. Improve college attainment and college success through scholarship support, because again, cost is the number one reason kids aren't completing. completing. And we've got to measure the outcomes of a program like this by the benefits to our people, to our region's young people, and the benefits to the community, the economic, the regional economy. So the college has been changing lives since 1975. I'm a Maryland Community College graduate. I graduated from Chesapeake College before Warwick ever opened. I've stayed on the shore my entire life, and I'm the Matt Masirello-type person that, you know, I've got a couple of degrees, and I stayed, uh, stayed on the shore. I moved 60 miles from one institution to another, but, um, it's, that's who we are. We're, we're, many of us come right out, uh, after high school, go to college, uh, and go right into the workforce. Others continue on and earn advanced degrees and come back and support our communities.
This is, uh, this seems to target high school students. What if they're working families, where they want to go, they want to get back into the workforce, and they want to go to Warwick?
You know, one of the things I hope about this, now, Garrett County has actually transitioned to that, and they're also funding that.
Right.
Um, you know, we have to look at cost with anything.
Right.
And the economic benefit. The economic spin is great, you know, turning tax dollars, it's a wonderful thing. We do have a number of scholarships, and what I would hope is that some of the providers of their scholarships would be looking more to the part-time people who are trying to improve their life, the older students, because, uh, the average age of our student is 26. So we have a lot of those people who are coming back to try to earn advanced degrees and to better their lives, and certainly, we want to continue to support them. This is one way to stop the brain drain, get our local young people involved, and get them through an education process, but we're not, certainly not turning our backs on the other people, but this program isn't funding them.
Uh, it'd be interesting to know what those numbers are as well, because it, it would, that is a very, that's, that's an area that's very much in need of Warwick Community College.
It is, and that's, uh, a lot of our students.
Yeah.
And both in the credit and non-credit arena, because we have a number of programs for licensures and certifications where they don't, middle-skills jobs don't mean you need a college degree.
Mm-hmm.
But we have middle-skills jobs that you need these college degree for, but other jobs, we have continued education offerings, like our truck driver training program, where people can get great jobs, uh, and with a three-month training program.
Right.
Certified nursing assistant programs. To work in a pharmacy, you have to have a license. You have to pharmacy technology. It's a short-term class, but all those licensures and certifications are important, and they're ways to get a good job in our community.
Um, I see, and that you mentioned that 50, so it's 59% of students get federal aid that covers, um, fees and tuition?
Not all, no. Uh, we, you know, students who apply for aid, and I'm not sure which slide, Mark, but, um, we have a number of students who, obviously, a high percentage of our students apply for financial aid. Some of it's partial coverage, because only 41% of student aid is, uh, met, and then 25% of that is met through loans. So federal financial aid is not a 100%, it's a graduated scale. Uh, so...
Well, I mean, the slide says 59% will receive federal financial aid covering full tuition and fees. Current is 59%.
59% will get that, okay.
Yeah.
That's based on our current, uh, current status, I'm sorry, right.
Um, so I, and I assume most of those are low-income Pell Grant.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's the assumption, because, you know, the federal Pell Grant, um, level's about $5,700. Warwick, um, I think your per, uh, credit fees, about $120 tuition and fees. So I mean, Pell Grant covers this, should cover everything for a large number, for probably 60% of your students. So we're not talking about the low-income students here that you mentioned earlier, are we?
We're not talking about the lowest-income students, because they're probably going to get coverage.
Yeah, okay, all right, just making that clear, all right.
Yeah, you're right.
Good.
Um, I guess I'd also ask, um, with each free tuition, uh, student that enters your college, I'm assuming the tuition does not cover total cost of the university?
Absolutely. Tuition, as you saw from that chart, tuition is currently today in the 40 percentile, and then we need state and local funding. And frankly, some of these students are going to need more services, there's no question about it. We just received a million-dollar grant from the federal government to supply services to 142 students annually. Additional support services to help them earn a college degree. Uh, and it's our first-generation economically disadvantaged students that that's helping. But, uh, you know, that, these students need more support and more help. It's, we don't want it to be a revolving door.
I, I understand.
Right.
But what my question is, is just very simple, is that the more students that we send to your college, uh, the more it's going to cost your college in order to educate them. And the tuition doesn't cover that, over and above tuition. And that's what I'm wondering.
Guaranteed.
Down, down the line, how do you anticipate being able to handle those additional expenses as, as a college?
Well, our operating costs are going to increase, obviously, as that increases. We can absorb, uh, this increase easily, um, and our, with our operating expense, I've got an operating budget that I'm going to be presenting you soon, um, and there is an increase built into that. It's not necessarily predicated on this moving forward or not. Uh, we know that we need some increases. We're not at the 2009 level of funding today. We need an additional $500,000 to get at our 2009 level of funding. So, yeah, there's going to be additional costs, there's no question about it. It's, this is covering a tuition piece, but there's two other pieces. The state has to step up, and the counties have to step up to keep funding.
I would suggest that if, if we were to institute a program like this, John, this, this is further evidence of local investment and further support for the state, we'll be funding the Cade form.
Yeah, today, the Cade-funded formula is $105 million below where it should be, uh, as of 2008. They've reduced the funding. We have a bill in the legislature, I'll be testifying on next Wednesday, to expedite the return to Cade to full funding, which will cost the state 26 million additional dollars per year for the next four years, just to move us up to where we ought to be.
I was just, I was just curious, as, you know, we know what our commitment is, based on the, the dollar figures that you've given us, and I was just curious as to what the best, best means might be to take advantage of that, whether, uh, the funding that we're looking at putting towards tuitions, whether it might be best to put that partially towards tuitions and partially towards Warwick, to sort of offset those costs, but still give the students the benefit. I mean, you may have students that love having tuition half-off, and the balance could go to Warwick to offset those expenses.
Yeah.
As opposed to 100% off to, of the tuition, and then leaving, you know, Warwick with the tad. Um, you know, that's just, just there, food for thought. The other thing is whether or not we could, uh, maybe implement some type of public-private partnership through this tuition, where we have, we try to solicit corporations to help this, and it could be, it, this could actually be, you know...
A community initiative.
Yes. Some, some drive-through. That's, through the community foundation, we could establish a fund for the tuitions and have businesses incorporated.
John, we've met with the community foundation and discussed that very idea, establishing an accounting fund at the community foundation, so that at some point in time, through our public and private investments in that fund, this may be a self-perpetual increase.
Yeah, excellent. Larry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm thinking, there, there's a difference in training and education. You mentioned both, and we're talking about businesses. So we all know that the businesses are really relying on the training that would be provided. Um, and we know also that a lot of students will get the training. They'll get a certification in a certain field, and then they'll move on to a better-paying job out of the county. What have you planned to retain these students? Is there any discussion on that?
Well, I think what retains, uh, I'm, you have to look at where we are now. 90% of the students stay in the community. It's been as high as 98%. I mean, during the recession, it's been tough. Some places, uh, opportunities haven't been there. But our students tend to stay, and that's historic, and that's across the state of Maryland, in all, through all the community colleges. They stay in the state of Maryland. So I don't see having additional students coming as changing that percentage or dynamic. I think they'll still be here as long as we have jobs and opportunities for them. What this does is tells potential employers, potential businesses, that we've got an educated workforce, and they can come here and know that they can be successful.
Right, and you said that 90%, you said, "Stay in Maryland," but we want them to stay in Wycomico County.
Well, 90% stay on the lower shore.
On, on the lower shore.
Right. Statewide, it's 90% stay in the state of Maryland. Our institutions, uh, is 90% stay locally.
Okay, and that's what I'd like to see, and that's what we need here.
And some of them might work across state line and come back and live here, and, you know, that sort of thing.
Contribute somehow.
Yeah.
Dr. Hoy, um, some of the police agencies, um, send their students to your college. Don't they, isn't it one of the requisitions that they stay working for that police agency for a certain amount of time to get their tuition paid?
I assume, I don't know. I think, uh, each of the agencies has their own rules and regulations as it relates to that, but, uh, all eight counties on the shore use our Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy. If you want to be a policeman, you go through our academy, you're here for, uh, 40 hours a week for 24 weeks before you set foot on the, on the job.
Right.
And I'm sure they have some payback requirement.
So they have to pay that, yeah.
Yep. But I, I don't know what it is, because I think probably each jurisdiction has a different requirement. And that's the way a lot of businesses work. They, um, you know, the hospitals were buying nurses, uh, through a period of time, through, uh, scholarshiping people. They were providing opportunities. Uh, PRMC, both PRMC and Atlanta General, were, um, giving, uh, money to students while they were in school. They were helping them with childcare. They were letting them use the sick childcare, uh, the childcare center at PRMC. They were providing them, uh, with medical coverage while they were in school, because many of them had families. So you see different businesses doing different things. And they had a guarantee that they had to work for them for three years, uh, after they, uh, completed their education. So, you know, businesses structure it in interesting ways to help support what their needs are for an educated workforce.
Governments could do the same thing.
Yeah, and governments can. You're right.
Uh, the only other suggestion I would make is, I would love to see possibly adjusting this free tuition, the subsidized tuition, based on their grades in high school. In other words, if someone's graduating with a 3.0 or a 4.0, someone graduating with a 4.0 would get a larger, uh, subsidized tuition, as opposed to maybe someone with a 2.0. Uh, it may create, it may incentivize high school students to start doing better as well, if they're looking that, for this as a long-term goal, and not only would it benefit the community, but it might help benefit our high schools, where they might start taking it more seriously, you know, in 10th, and 11th, and 12th grade, because the long-term goal is get a 4.0 and free tuition, as opposed to a 3.0 and 75% subsidized tuition. Make sense? Maybe?
In some ways, uh, that's kind of how we distinguish between academic scholarship and grants and awards. And I guess the, the problem with that is that we probably have more students who have, um, academic challenges.
Right.
But who can be successful. John, I can't tell you the number of students I've had come to me at graduation and say, "Dr. Hoy, you won't believe this. I just graduated today with honors. I was one of the worst students in my high school graduating class, but I found my way, and I applied myself, and now I'm successful." And it happens all the time. So I, I would hate to have a criteria that would disincentivize some students from coming to school or being able to continue in school, because again, cost is the number-one reason. It's not their academic talent. We can, we can work with them if we have time and help them be successful. Those kids in developmental education, if they complete developmental education, they are as successful, or even more successful, than the kids who didn't need it.
Right. Well, even, even the ones that maybe have a, a C average are still going to be subsidized to a certain degree through, through the county if we follow this plan. And, I don't know. I'll leave it up to you guys. You're the educator, and maybe, maybe Dr. Frederick can help you from his perspective. But it might be interesting, at least to look to see if that is an incentive or disincentive.
Sure.
Excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
And I, I think it's a good proposal. I do. We thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoy.
Mr. President, gentlemen of the county council, next on your agenda this evening is a brief presentation on, uh, economic development activities in the, uh, commercial economic development outlook presented by Mr. Brett Miller and Mr. John McClellan from SVNS.
He's having trouble.
SVN Miller Commercial Real Estate.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Let's see if our technology will work here, or I hope.
All right. Why don't you get it plugged in, if you can, uh, state your name, um, for, for the public.
Brett Miller, Brett Miller, Sperry Van Ness, or SVN.
Miller Commercial Real Estate.
John McClellan, SVN Miller Commercial Real Estate.
Thank you for being here.
Come on.
Just, uh, I thought, you know, the reason for bringing you in, uh, as, as you know, as you heard from the, the prior presentation, Wycomico County is doing, making every effort they can towards, uh, economic development within the county, job creation, whatever it might take. Um, I've always felt that one industry that sort of has a pulse on all of the other industries is probably, is the commercial real estate industry, because you gentlemen get the chance to talk every day to, uh, companies who may want to come here and may not want to come here, and I felt that, uh, it would just be very interesting to see, um, what your take on it was, as far as what the, what creates that incentive for a business to come here, and what more maybe Wycomico County could do, uh, to encourage other companies to come here, so, and their families. Right?
Absolutely. Well, thank you for having us tonight. We'll try to be, uh, kind of brief, give you an overview. As John said, he asked me a little bit, we kind of started the conversation, was the sale transaction we had a few months ago on Route 50. It was a, uh, large commercial tract that, kind of the first one we've had to that nature since the economy has kind of rebounded. And I kind of went on to a conversation to basically say, um, "Well, what else is happening? What are we doing well?" From our, from our vantage point, you're right. We talk with people every day from California to Florida to Maine about looking in Wycomico County for one reason or another. Um, might be a broker, might be a developer, might be a factory or a business wanting to locate here. Um, but, um, uh, so, number one, I welcome any questions you all have now, during the presentation. Um, but we just thought we would, would, uh, offer some, uh, what's happening, what we see going well, and what we see as some challenges. And honestly, this is kind of an outgrowth of our sales meeting this morning, where our nine guys got together, and we just kind of, like, presented this question, and, and you'll see some of the questions that are on their minds that they're hearing from their clients, so.
John, before you get started, John, it's hot in here. And if there's anything we can do about it, I don't know.
This time of the year, if we turn the ventilation on, it'll be heat. Don't need more to keep.
Okay.
Get your coat off.
It's going to get hotter.
I just thought I, okay.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I know. We're all, sorry.
Are we okay?
You can go, I, I'll try not.
I'll try to minimize the air.
Get your wet coat on, Alex.
So, um, uh, so what is happening? This is just kind of a bullet point of some of the transactions you may have heard about, some things that are happening. It's not just a list of transactions, but kind of trends we see. Um, uh, you saw the, uh, the property that kind of started this whole discussion at the Route 50 and Narwhale intersection. Kraus Properties acquired 26 acres for, oops, I forgot the rest of that sentence, uh, for the development of a highway commercial park, really destined, designed to service a gateway property, people entering Salisbury. Here's a good place to stop and get services instead of buzzing on by and going to Ocean City or wherever you're going. Um, once again, we're seeing a real strength of national tenants. Uh, we've all heard the infamous Cracker Barrel story, but there's a lot of other companies that are looking seriously at Salisbury, not just food service, but retailers, other companies who are recognizing that this market has the demographics and potential to, uh, to deliver what their company's looking for. Uh, and by the way, if anybody wants these slides when I'm done, I'll be more than happy to email them to, to anybody who just asked me or shoot me a note.
Okay.
Medical real estate, uh, we're seeing a strong demand as medical transitions from what, 20 years ago, might have been a, a single, uh, single doctor, or maybe two partners practicing, to where now there's much larger practices demanding kind of a totally different configuration of space. And that's, that's leading to some new development, as well as transitions from, say, something like a Milford Street Professional Center with much smaller suites, to much newer, larger, and those are being backfilled by other uses. Um, you may have read the article about, uh, Carmax. They've been looking at Salisbury for seven years. They were about to do something in the late 90s, or late 2007 and '08, when the economy took a little turn. They backed out, but they now, they now own, um, about four parcels on North Salisbury Boulevard, where Boulevard Motors and some other properties, where they're going to be redeveloping that. And that's, that's an example of a national chain looking at Salisbury, looking at demographics, and looking at the opportunity, uh, to come here, do business, and create jobs. Um, our firm has been, uh, tentatively selected to market the Labanall facility. That's a, that's bad news for the area, that we, uh, are losing a major employer, but we hope to be able to redeploy that with, uh, bringing in some new jobs creation here. So, uh, I don't have pricing yet, but that's a very large facility, but it should go on the market here in the next 30 days. College Square Shopping Center is one that kind of snuck by a couple of us, um, but that's the former Super Fresh Shopping Center on South, um, College Avenue, and, uh, that just recently sold for 8.5, or a little over 8.5 million dollars. But that's evidence of somebody looking at a shopping center, still has a large vacancy, and saying, "I believe in what's happening in Wycomico County and the city of Salisbury." And, I mean, that's a, that's a chunk of money to, to throw down on a piece of property. Um, we're seeing much more confidence in the market. We're seeing people that have been sitting on the sidelines, wanting to do something, which is certainly, I think, a rising tide is going to lift all boats. Um, we're, uh, we're seeing, and I got this from the latest SWED report, both the number of permits and the value of the total commercial permits in Wycomico County are significantly increased, uh, over last year, year-to-date. Um, and we're seeing a strong land market appreciating, um, commercially and agriculturally, um, throughout the county, really throughout the region. Um, some things we're glad to see the county doing. Um, uh, you guys have been talking about the Air Business Center, how do we get utilities out there? How do we make it a more vibrant, uh, asset to the community? In my, from our eyes, uh, you know, having a, having a commercial airport is something that, you look around here, nobody else has a commercial airport, especially with an airline having a maintenance hub there. That's an asset we really need to deploy and really need to leverage. I'd like to see you continue those kind of positive discussions, and then, uh, really come up with an effective marketing plan to, uh, to bring new companies in with that asset. Um, the County of Economic, County Office of Economic Development, I know, is still kind of in a development stage, but we want to make... stage, but we want to make it known that how do we leverage that? How do we, as business people, know more about that? How can we use that to help bring those same people into do business in Wycomico County? You may have heard, of course, there's some very proactive efforts with Lower Shore Wind. County's done some of their own solar deals. Alternative energy is definitely an industry that's attracting more and more interest here in Wycomico. And the offshore wind contracts could lead to some nice industrial manufacturing abilities here right in Wycomico County. Nice to see some very strong cooperation between the city and county. I think that's just positive for everybody. One of our advisors actually emailed me and said, "You know, I'm not from Wycomico County," but he's been working here. He said, "Every agency I go to has a willingness to help. If I ask a question, they say, 'Here's an answer.'" And that's certainly good news. But he added, he added kind of one more caveat to that. He said, "But I also think they should say, 'Here's your answer, but what's the problem you're trying to solve?'" Because they may answer the question, but what's the problem? Maybe there's a different answer that would help you do business better. So, that's just how you communicate that to department heads. I just think that'd be something that could be expanded upon. Applaud you for asking hard financial questions. I mean, this is a growing county with lots of needs, asking those questions and not just doing something the way it's always been done. Now, challenges we see. Not trying to step on anybody's toes or offend anybody. You asked me to kind of, here's, these are observations that we're seeing, we're hearing, and our advisors spoke up about. This showed up on the slide this afternoon after I had a call from a guy who said, "I need some warehouse in Selbyville, Millsboro, or maybe Seaford." I asked a little bit more and he said, "No, I don't want to go to Salisbury because of the crime." I sat back in my chair, I said, "Wait a minute. Excuse me?" I was a little bit off my real estate topic and I was kind of defending my community. But I say this all the time to people that say, you know, you see on all kinds of places, Salisbury is one of the most dangerous cities in the world, or whatever it is. It's a denominator problem. As we all know, we've got a tremendous MSA here with vibrant activity. We've got people coming from all over the shore to work here, to have services here. And then we're taking all the good and bad stuff that happens and we're dividing it by the city of Salisbury population. I don't live in the city limits. Most of you, no, most of you don't live in the city limits. So, it's a denominator problem. At the end of the day, it's a communication problem. How do we, as a community, city and county, communicate? It's bad math. My opinion, it's bad math. Regional focus and relationships. Many of you know that Sussex is part of the Metropolitan Statistical Area. And that's evidenced by the number of cars that you see at the mall or anywhere else coming into town, and it's the number of people that come in here to work. They live in Sussex, whereas Dr. Hoy said, you know, they might live in another community and go, live here, go out, go live there and come in. But, and I don't know this, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to criticize anybody, has there been a sit-down with the Sussex County Council? Has there been discussions with Todd Lawson, the county administrator? We do a lot of tri-county stuff, but...
Right. That's a good point, because we do focus on tri-county council and Somerset, Worcester, Wycomico, but that's a very good point.
It's a different state.
Right.
And I'm not going to brag the, trust me, the Board of Realtors, there's the Sussex County and the Coastal Association, and they like to fight with each other and don't always see the same eye to eye. But we developed a commercial overlay group called the Peninsula Commercial Alliance that is designed to realize, we do commercial real estate, I'm licensed in both states. We do it all over the place. And it's truly a region. So, how can we foster that? And if we can help with any of that, I'm personally acquainted with a lot of people in Sussex County would love to help foster that.
John, we do that. We work with Sussex County particularly on transportation. Since usually we got transportation coming through Wycomico County that goes through Suffolk and goes through Somerset. So, there's a lot of transportation interest that we spend quite a bit of time doing with Sussex.
Good. I think that's something to be applauded for, I suppose. Development costs, you know, there's a lot of perception and you've heard lots of discussions about sprinkler codes. I guess my argument to that is, you hear people on both sides of the fence, it's good, it's bad, it's cheaper, it's more expensive. Let's make sure we truly understand as a county, what's it cost to build a house in Wycomico versus Worcester versus Somerset versus Sussex? You know, what's the cost? What are they? Again, we communicate that when somebody says, "Oh, your taxes are too high, it's this, it's that." There's another slide I want to get to and another point I'll bring up that's kind of related to that, but again, let's have information. Non-municipal sewers. If any of you attended our real estate forum a few weeks ago, Bill McCain commented that says Eastern Sussex is very hot for residential development, primarily in his opinion, because there's a lot of sewer districts, a lot of different sewer districts where, I don't know what the number is, but a lot of areas where people can go in and they're on either some type of system that isn't municipally based. And I know the city of Salisbury would love to have everybody annex and move in, but trust me, there's a lot of businesses and you know a lot of residences who say, "That sounds good, but I don't want to pay another layer of taxes." So, how does, what can the county do? There may not be an answer to it, an affordable answer.
We're looking at that too, John.
Something to think about. We think it restricts non-metro growth. Now, here's one we've never talked about, but relationship with the Board of Education. I'm not here to criticize, I'm not here to question. I'm just saying that too often, and of all the topics we talked about in our board, in our sales meeting this morning, this one garnered the most enthusiasm and the most time. And the message was, we believe we have a good school system, but how do we communicate that? Because too often, we're hearing, you know, "You spend too much money, you don't give us enough money," or whatever the issue is. But I'm a belief that back in the day, before, and you all have to deal with social media and blogs and whatever else that, back in the day, for example, Paul Martin and Frank Morris didn't have to deal with. But I don't believe for a minute they didn't go behind that door and have a fierce argument about something and come out front and say, "Here's what we're going to do for our community." So, I just hope that there's a way that, however, it can be done. And I'm not saying, "You're right, they're wrong, they're wrong, you're right." I'm not saying anything. I'm just suggesting that the less, the more we communicate the positiveness of our community to the outside, the better we are. I was talking about this to another advisor in my office. He said, and we were talking about crime, he said, "Every time I turn the news on, it looks like Dover is terrible." And it's just because that's the news. So, how do we offset the news? It's public relations, it's communication, it's messaging, it's branding. Just how do we do that? I heard this from some younger guys in our office, but quality of life challenges. As we all know, you know, the days of IBM coming here and building a plant and hiring 250 new people doesn't happen as often. So, how do we create an environment where people want to come with the right job skills, employers will follow? So, just one particular thing, liquor licensing, say, for example, at the Civic Center. I know you all were addressing that, but that was just an example of some things that were brought up, things we're hearing from people that develop and invest in commercial real estate. Executives choosing Sussex or Worcester, whether it's a Purdue executive, a physician at the hospital, we've heard it, they want to live in Sussex, they want to live in Worcester for lots of reasons. Maybe it's because they want to keep their boat on deep water and fish in the ocean. Okay, that's nothing we can do about that. But are there other reasons? But let's just find the facts and create solutions. What is the facts? How many, you know, maybe you worked with Purdue and PRMC and all these places. What are, why are they going and what can we do rather than, and again, respond, communicate, market? This is one we hear a lot. "Well, I don't want to do business in Wycomico County, I want to move to Delaware. It's always easier." I had my CPA actually do analysis a couple of years ago about the cost in Delaware and the cost in Maryland. And you'd be surprised. It's not always easier and it's not always cheaper. But the message is, the communication is, yes, it is. It's easier. And so, if we know the facts, and maybe that's something that County Finance Office or whatever could undertake, take a couple of types of businesses. What would it take to do your business in Wycomico? What would it take to do your business in Sussex? How would that look to you, right down to the payroll? What's that look like? And then again, we have facts, we can communicate it, and then we can offset it by saying, "Here's a study that shows it's not true." Or, you know, hope it's not true. Again, fine facts create solutions. Those are some of the issues that we had. I welcome questions. I try not to take too long, but just thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah. I appreciate you taking the time for the presentation. It was very helpful. Do you see any trend as far as businesses that are coming here, whether it's manufacturing, whether it's retail, whether it's service industry, specifically as to where you think it may be developing over the next couple of years?
One of the things I would say about our county is through the whole economic downturn, we didn't really get a big extra supply, oversupply of vacant industrial buildings, or frankly, even vacant retail buildings. You're hard-pressed to go to any mid-sized community in the country and not find a vacant Walmart, a vacant Kmart, a vacant something.
Right.
We don't have a vacant Big Box, other than that Super Fresh, which kind of, that's probably the anomaly of it. But we have right now on the market, before Labanol, we have one industrial building for sale on the market, 60,000 square feet. So, you know, we've kind of kept up with industrial, I think the types of manufacturing have gone from, you know, take for example, the Bayliner Building. That was at one time filled with people manufacturing boats for a big company. Now, it's filled with a local entrepreneur and about seven little companies. So, you know, so those kinds of trends, I would say, from bigger to more smaller, more entrepreneurial. And the more attractive we make our community to live and work and do business, the more the entrepreneurs are going to come as well.
And I think, John, on the retail side, more and more national and regional credit tenants are looking at this market.
Right.
We're seeing a influx of those. And we're seeing, I think, on the 13th corridor, Route 50 corridor, we see a lot more redevelopment. We see all the blade buildings being formed down, redeveloped into some other nicer type of retail.
Good. And we'll look for your input, because I know, had discussions, I know that Bob's had discussions, and we are looking as to how we want to market Wycomico County. That's important to us. And taking the points that you've made today is very helpful in understanding exactly how maybe we can reach out to that audience, whether we're talking about education, our workforce, or the quality of life, lack of crime.
It's a communication, it's a messaging, it's a branding.
Perception.
It's a perception.
Right.
And we stand ready to help you just with ideas or whatever, on the record, off the record, have a talk.
All right. Gentlemen, we appreciate you taking the time here.
Thank you.
Very much so. Thank you very much.
John, we would like to have your presentation.
Okay.
Email it to me if you would.
Okay, I'll email it to you.
And I'll distribute it.
Absolutely. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, John Brent.
Next item for Council's consideration is Resolution Number 08, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of Lysel Aspey to the Wycomico County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 08, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution 09, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of John S. Ellis, CPA, as a county trustee member to the trustees for the Employees' Retirement Investment Trust as well as the Gatsby 45 Trust.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 09, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 10, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of Robert L. Moore, CPA, CFF, as a trustee member to the Wycomico County Death Benefit Plan for Volunteer Firefighters Trust. That's the former LoSAP program that we've transitioned to over the last couple of years.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 10, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Resolution Number 11, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of Bradley A. Belachico as a trustee member to the Wycomico County Death Benefit Plan for Volunteer Firefighters Trust.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 11, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
And Resolution Number 12, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of Stephen E. Hill as a trustee member for the Wycomico County Death Benefit Plan for Volunteer Firefighters Trust.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 12, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Resolution Number 13, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of John S. Ellis, CPA, as a trustee member for the Wycomico County Death Benefit Plan for Volunteer Firefighters Trust.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 13, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Resolution Number 14, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of R. Wayne Straussberg as a trustee member to the Wycomico County Death Benefit Plan for Volunteer Firefighters Trust.
All those in favor of Resolution 14, 2016? Excuse me, entertain a motion. Threw me there, Wayne, because I was trying to throw one at you. All those in favor of Resolution 14, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Discussion.
I've got a question. Matt, I think you said it was LoSAP, at LoSAP's length of service.
It was, the program previously was called LoSAP, and it was, frankly, it was an insurance program. It was becoming very top-heavy and frankly, it was no longer efficient.
So, it's not LoSAP, it's just a death benefit?
This is a replacement. This is a replacement program.
If a volunteer firefighter dies.
For volunteer firefighters, yes.
Okay, good.
And the reason you have so many of these is this trustee body is just being formed for the first time.
I know there's been a lot of discussion at some of the county association meetings.
And it's been a lot of budget discussions for the last couple of years.
Larry, if you have questions, I'll give Burton Whitison your number.
He knows it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 14, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Resolution Number 15, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of Michelle C. Ennis, PhD, as administrator to the Wycomico County Death Benefit Plan for the Volunteer Firefighters Trust.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 15, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
That completes the formation of that trust. Moving on to Resolution Number Sixteen, Two Thousand and Sixteen, at the request of the county executive, the resolution confirming the reappointment of John T. Cannon as a designated director of PAC Fourteen Incorporated.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution Sixteen, Two Thousand and Sixteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Resolution passes.
Resolution Number Seventeen, Two Thousand and Sixteen, at the request of the county executive, confirming the reappointment of Joe Holloway to the Salisbury Wycomico Economic Development SWED Board of Directors.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution Seventeen, Two Thousand and Sixteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Roser, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. I call your attention to Resolution Eighteen, Two Thousand and Sixteen, presented by the council president. It is a resolution accepting the audit report for the Wycomico County State's Attorney's Misdemeanor Offender Program.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution Eighteen, Two Thousand and Sixteen.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
If I may?
Yes.
Yeah, sometime ago, the state's attorney suggested an audit...
Mr. Roser, probably closer on the mic.
Sometime ago, the state's attorney suggested an audit of the misdemeanor offender program. The program has offered to first-time offenders, mainly drug and alcohol offenders. The program requires payment of a fee, usually eighty dollars. Offenders must perform verified community service, typically twenty hours for alcohol, forty for drug-related offenses. Benefits of the program are reduction of prosecutor time to deal with such matters, reduce court time, reduce court docket, reduce incarceration expense, and it generates revenue for the general fund. The objective was to gain an understanding of the program and evaluate internal controls. We found internal controls and adherence to be satisfactory on our familiar three-point scale. The program generated over sixty thousand dollars in FY thirteen, but has since fallen to thirty to forty thousand dollar range due to the exclusion of theft offenses in FY fourteen. This is respectfully submitted. Steve Roser, CPA, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Eighteen, Two Thousand and Sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carry. Resolution passes. Entertain a motion to accept Resolution Nineteen, Two Thousand and Sixteen. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second? Motion's second. Discussion. Thank you, Mr. Roser.
Thank you. We performed an audit of the fuel pricing for Wycomico County, including gasoline, diesel fuel, fuel oil, natural gas, and propane. Largest users of propane are public works, the airport, wrecked parks, and additionally the board of education uses large amounts of propane. Government office building and the detention center use natural gas. All gasoline and diesel fuel is delivered to Rhodes Division Complex on Owens Branch Road, and the main objective of this audit was to verify contractual pricing adherence by vendors. The period examined was FY twenty fifteen. The county uses standard bidding procedures, however, fuel prices fluctuate. All types of fuels tested, with the exception of natural gas tied to, tie their pricing to wholesale pricing, published by an outside agency known as OPUS for bidding purposes. OPUS is a private enterprise that charges fees for information. We were unable to purchase the information, and were therefore unable to judge whether or not the vendors were in contractual compliance for all products except natural gas. We did find that the natural gas supplier was in compliance with the bid price for FY fifteen and offered three recommendations. Management may want to consider a subscription to wholesale information provided by OPUS. As with any decision to purchase additional services, cost-benefit analysis should be performed. Alternative to leave, management could occasionally request certified copies of the rack pricing from the supplier ancillary to billing, and additionally, regular bidding as practice would serve to provide additional control over pricing through the competitive process. This audit report will be posted on the county website upon acceptance. As always, thank you for your support, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Now, I know that the OPUS, did you have a question there?
No.
The OPUS, I know you're not too fond of, as far as a means of, to an end. Will you be making suggestions to the executive branch on where to follow up?
Right. We've had conversations with purchasing and with the administration, trying to get a better handle on this. I don't know what our alternatives are. It may be that there's not a good one, but routine, I think, the bottom line is routine bidding of these contracts, which they're doing, the administration's doing that, would provide, through the competitive process, I think, the best-case scenario for making sure we got the lowest prices out there.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of Resolution Nineteen, Two Thousand and Sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carry. Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Roser.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we have a public hearing. Notice hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February second, two thousand and sixteen, commencing at six thirty PM in the council chambers of the government office building, Salisbury, Maryland, in conformity with Section Three-Eleven-D of the Charter of Wycomico County, on the following bills which were introduced for consideration at a legislative session in said county for the year two thousand and sixteen. The following bills may be called for final reading and consideration commencing immediately after the efforts of public hearing. Two thousand and sixteen dash oh one, an act to amend the Wycomico County Personnel Manual, Chapter Fifteen, entitled Leave Benefits and Holidays. Section fifteen oh six, entitled Mandatory Leave, to authorize the county executive to declare mandatory leave. And two thousand and sixteen dash oh two, an act to amend the Wycomico County Code, Chapter Two Oh Three, titled Taxation. Article One, titled Tax of Recorded Instruments, to add a new section, Two Oh Three Dash One Point One, titled Tax Collected, to authorize the Director of Finance to collect recordation tax on Wycomico County. If the foregoing bill, number two thousand and sixteen dash oh one, and bill number two thousand and sixteen dash oh two are enacted, they will take effect sixty days from the date they became law, subject to the referendum provisions of the Charter of Wycomico County, Maryland. So we'll start on Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen dash oh one.
Everybody get that? At this point in time, we open the floor for a public hearing in reference to Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh One. If you'd like to make comments in reference to this specific bill, go to the podium, please. State your name and address and your concerns.
That's the mandatory leave bill for clarification.
Mandatory leave bill, yes, thank you. Okay. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. Entertain a motion from council to adopt Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh One.
So moved.
Second? Motion's second. Discussion.
Couple of issues with it. First of all, the county executive assuming the role of the county council, I think, is a wonderful thing, but taking the responsibility, however, mandatory leave for employees unfortunately takes their way, the right to be paid, except for exceptions, which may or may not be fair to the county employees. I think we should continue to look at this and look for some alternative where there are possibly the other ways to make sure that our county employees continue to be paid during mandatory leave. The other thing is that we have a personnel manual, which we have been reviewing, and this should be one of the items that we look at in our personnel manual. We should take it, be taking it as a section at a time instead of piecemeal. We've talked about this earlier and said that we would like to have parcels of the personnel manual presented to the council. And it would be much more prudent and effective if we could go through a whole section of the personnel manual at one time, and I'd like to see this.
Yes, Joe?
Maybe Mrs. Ennis, Ms. Ennis would like to come forward and explain to us why this is being done and what the cost-benefit or...
Well, keep in mind, this bill is not about mandatory leave, specifically the pros and cons of mandatory leave. This bill is simply transferring the authority from the county council to the executive branch. Am I correct?
For determining mandatory leave.
Originally, as it is right now, the county council is still noted as the party who authorizes mandatory leave. This wasn't changed when we changed our form of government. It was an oversight. So this bill is simply trying to change, change the authority from the county council to the executive branch.
Correct. So this is in the charter, is what you're saying?
Yes. And as for submitting chapters, I have submitted chapters. I know you've had a busy schedule. You actually have two chapters waiting to be reviewed on work session, and you have one. And there's a couple more chapters.
Go ahead. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, aside from, again, leaving aside the pros and cons of mandatory leave, I mean, it makes sense that, I mean, the council doesn't supervise employees. So, I mean, it makes sense to give the county executive this sort of authority, and I guess he can use his discretion, and, you know, if he uses it and people don't like it, then he pays the price for that then. So, I mean, I mean, that, I mean, it kind of clears up the chain of command in terms of employee emergencies, I guess, is when mandatory leave is usually used.
Any other questions, comments? I, I think it's important to transfer the authority to where it should be, as Mark suggested as well, but as, as John suggested too, I'm not a huge fan of mandatory leave, and I think we really need to maybe revisit it when we do come back with Chapters One and Two and the whole process.
Yes, there are various forms of leave, mandatory leave, liberal leave, and administrative leave.
Right.
So this was a piece that should have came forward when we looked at those.
Right.
There's multiple options, it's not just...
Is there anything else in the manual that needs to be transferred? Is this this?
Chapter one and two mainly.
Okay. And is that the ones you brought?
That's what we have for...
Okay.
Probably for the next meeting. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh One on a roll call, please. We'll start with Councilman Dodd.
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hawley?
Yes.
Councilman Hall?
Yes.
Councilman Kilmer?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. It's unanimous. Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh One passes. Thank you for your help. Ms. Harris?
And the second bill is Two Thousand and Sixteen Dash Oh Two, an act to amend the Wycomico County Code, Chapter Two Oh Three, titled Taxation. Article One, titled Tax of Recorded Instruments, to add a new section, Two Oh Three Dash One Point One, titled Tax Collected, which authorizes the Director of Finance to collect recordation tax in Wycomico County.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing. For anyone that would like to discuss Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh Two, go to the podium, please. State your name and address and what your concern might be. Yeah, I figured out by now, no one's here for these two public hearings. This concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh Two. Entertain a motion from council to accept Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh Two.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't really have a lot of discussion about it. I just find it interesting that we can, we can save this much money by doing this, and why hadn't it been done years ago?
Agreed.
And I know nobody has an answer for that. I'm not asking for an answer to that, but it's pretty significant what we're doing here, so.
Mr. Hawley, I'll, I'll take a stab at an answer for, since the beginning of time or since the beginning of the, the tax. The tax was collected by the clerk of the circuit court, and of course, that became revenue to his office or her office, as it may be. And the idea came from the clerk of the court that he was willing to give up that, partly for reasons of his, of his own in his own office, and if the county were to take it over, then the, the commission would come to the county. So actually, it was initiated by the clerk of the court.
Well, many thanks go out to Mark Bowen for bringing this to our attention.
And he was thanked a few weeks ago when he was here.
I think it's important, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, Wycomico County does not have a recordation tax. Recordation tax is a state debt. In Wycomico County, we had an administrative agreement with the state to collect this tax, and so they're giving us five percent. What the state is collecting, but Wycomico County itself does not have a recordation tax.
We're collecting the money, we're getting the benefit of it.
We're getting a five percent...
Right.
Administrative fee.
Which is a pretty significant amount here.
Yes, yeah. And, and you're right, Larry, Mark Bowen's saving the county hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we do appreciate that. And I might mention it again at the next meeting, Mr. Kramer. Any other discussion? Seeing none. A roll call. All those in favor of Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh Two. We'll start with Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Hawley?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Two Thousand and Sixteen Oh Two passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Harris. At this time, we now open the floor for public comments in general. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. Need you to state your name and your address. Try not to be too repetitive. Try to be as concise as you can so that we can all get out, out of here at a, at a decent hour.
Good evening. My name is Philip Frost.
You can lift that mic up, Mr. Frost.
As to the last meeting that I spoke of about the water, about this chicken farm owner from, was it North Carolina? Oh, not North Carolina, Virginia, sorry. I want to know, how far are we on that? Did they pass it? Was he granted? Or is it still open for discussion? Because, like I said, outwater is a precious resource that we have, and we all here, no matter who we are, what title we have, we're all caretakers. And once we lose that water, it can never be replaced again. It's not us. Our grandchildren, I may not see it. But I'm asking you, do not let this come into our county and ruin what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Now, normally, in any public hearing... Normally, in any public hearing, it's not the same as a work session. There's not really a debate and ongoing interaction between the council and the public, but I would like to make an exception, because you make, make a very good point, Mr. Frost, and I think it would be good for, for everyone to understand where we are as a county today. Mr. Straussburg, would you mind giving us an update? And if you want Mr. Lennox to help you with that, feel free.
Yes, thank you. I think it's, it's probably best that the Jack Lennox advise the public as to exactly where that proposed development stands at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Straussburg.
Thank you.
Mr. Lennox, if you can remind everyone of who you are and who you represent.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President. Jack Lennox, I'm Planning and Development Director for the county. As the council is well aware, up until about three years ago, Wycomico County did not require a building permit for an agricultural use. And that was something that, with the tightening of the requirements primarily for groundwater from, from federal government down through the state, we now administer stormwater controls and have, in effect, a way to make sure that what shows in a plan actually gets done. That was the intent of this council and executive when you required that building permits be issued. Again, up till three years ago, it would simply happen. In regard to the specific plan in question, they did submit an application to us. They've gone through state erosion sediment control for review, and also for stormwater from the county. There's been a significant dialogue taking place with, between the county executive and various integrators. We're trying to get a good handle when it comes down to individual property proposals. In other words, individual property owners, individual poultry growers, and how their standards relate to the industry in general.
Can I ask you a clarification for the audience?
Certainly.
As far as how the integrator's role is, interacts with the actual grower?
Sure. I am not certainly the expert on this, but I'm becoming more and more informed every day, Mr. President, that the integrator being five, I believe that have operations in our area, that basically contract with the growers. They prescribe standards, they sign a contract, and they basically dictate the process.
Integrators are Purdue?
I'm sorry.
The integrators are Purdue?
Sure, sure. Purdue, Mount Air, Tyson, Allen, Amick, in our case. Trying to get a handle on what the standards are from the industry on down. And we have heard references to Delmar Vipulci Industry and Good Neighbor Policies. We've expressed interest in trying to make sure those are abided by, if not, if not greater, standards. That being said, we have asked that that particular property owner go back and redesign and resubmit. And that's based on some indications from the integrator, in this case Tyson, that they would not have a complex as large as that, and that they would more closely abide with those previously voluntary standards. So, we have not issued a permit. Our understanding is they are in redesign, and we will keep you informed when that happens and as the evaluation takes place. The way that the system is set up right now, however, if they meet the requirements, it is considered a permitted use, but there are no permits issued as of today. But there are no permits issued as of today. We do not have any application in front of us as of today, since it is in redesign.
One question also for clarification. If the council were to pass legislation tonight in reference to the chicken industry as a whole, what would be the status of this particular grower?
I can only address what has been your policy in the past, and that is that it'll apply to those who have not yet submitted, those who have not yet experienced the expense of the design, purchased the property under a certain set of rules. That's been your, your policy and procedure in the past.
Mr. Lennox, do we, does the council approve permits? Do we vote on permits?
The council does not approve permits. Uh, you adopt the codes, we administer the codes, presumably if they don't comply, they're denied, and if they comply, they proceed.
Mr. Lennox, for clarification, you said that this, this particular chicken house is in redesign?
Yes, we've asked them to make some modifications.
So would that, are you stating that that would not, they would be grandfathered in if we were, if the coun, if the council were?
They have a building permit application before us, and I would say it's similar to if someone submits a house plan and the building inspector reviews and says, and asks them to go back and make a change. Uh, that's my, my own impression, but we would certainly advise, rely on the advice of council for that.
Jack, if you, um, if you could stay here for a second. Um, a lot of the feed, that feedback that we've gotten, uh, is that I think a lot of the members of the community, the people who live in this particular area, uh, are, are concerned about being informed as this process rolls out. And there is a very public process. And, Jack, if you could walk people through the public process, um, that the county goes through, for instance, for a CAFO. Um, I, I think, uh, it may help you in, in understanding that there is a very public process where you will be able to continue to input. Uh, the second thing that I'd like to mention is that we, uh, will be in an, we being the county executive and I will be in Annapolis tomorrow. The county executive is trying to set up a meeting tomorrow with the secretary of the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene because we want to sit down with the secretary and we want to discuss in detail what implications there may be or how the state perceives any health risks that may be associated with a, a, um, a development of this size. The second thing that we're doing is we're engaging a hy, a hydrologist to, uh, give us a report on the hydrology and any potential impact on the paleo channel. So we're taking your concerns very seriously, and there will be a very public process where we will, uh, continue to try to inform you and provide you with an opportunity to input on this whole permitting process.
Thank you, Ms. Strasburg. Mr. Lennox, if you could be as brief as possible to give everyone time here.
Mr. President, I will be very brief on that issue. Uh, I will defer, of course, to the executive and Mr. Strasburg about the process going forward. In the past, there has not been, for good or bad, much public interaction with this. It is considered a permitted use. It is not something where you would have a public hearing at the council, uh, one of those little yellow advertising signs, a notice in the paper. That's not something we've had local. Whatever has happened through the fed, federal government and the state in terms of setting up those regulations that they go by and the public participation on that end, I would obviously defer to others. We have not traditionally had that public process. This would be a significant step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox. We'll continue now. I thought it was necessary to help, uh, help everyone in the room understand where the county is on this, on this topic. We can now continue with the public hearing. Again, state your name and your address, please, for, for the audience.
Monica Brooks, and I'm at two nine zero two two Red Fox Drive here in Wycomico County. Um, after hearing the clarifications, which are some, some of the things I already knew, um, what I'm still concerned about is, um, the fact, well, the dissemination of information, which has not really been, we've really had to dig for this information. Um, also, what I'm not hearing is consideration of the, um, people in the community in the process of determining whether or not you're going to accept this application. Um, the application, it sounds to me, from what was just mentioned, is that as long as they have, um, a re, um, redesign, um, in place, and once they dot a couple of i's and cross a couple t's, then it looks like this thing is going to go ahead no matter what. And that's what I have a problem with. What I have a problem with is people in this county who want to be in a county where we can breathe good air, we can be com, confident in the water that we're drinking, we can be comfortable to know that when we come out of our two-lane road, which Nailor Mill Road is just a two-lane road, that we're not going to be inundated by a hundred and thirty eighteen-wheelers on a six-week, at six weeks at a time hauling trucks, materials, all kinds of things. This road is already inundated with traffic. So we're talking about increased pollution, we're talking about, um, affecting our possible water, the stench, what's going to happen with the carcasses that need to be disposed of, the, the change in the, the gases in the air. So, I think it's very important, the reason why we're here is because, number one, it's on PAC TV, so the word can get out. Number two, because we want to make sure that the council understands what your people are, what's important to them. What's important to us is that our environment is protected, that our children can be comfortable in our neighborhoods, and that we don't have to be infected by something just because of an economic reason. And I'm here to give you copies. We have petitions that have been signed, a hundred and fifty, um, families thus far, and I've brought you ten copies.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Hello, my name is Margaret Barnes, and I just moved to Salisbury in September. And I moved here with my eight-year-old son, who goes to Pemberton Elementary School. And I was horrified when I learned that thirteen mega chicken houses were being built not a mile away from city limits, and, um, that these mega chicken houses are the length of two football fields, and that with thirteen chicken houses that size, that's, uh, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand birds, um, not a mile from Salisbury city limits, which, you know, is a densely populated area. So, I'm really confused, uh, why there's, um, why there's not more, um, uh, opposition to this. Because according to the EPA, animal waste is the number-one polluter of our water, and it's number-two for our air. And, um, children are especially affected, especially when it comes to air, because they're young, they have lung capacity, so they breathe in twenty to fifty percent more air than, than we do. So they're much more susceptible to, uh, lung disease, asthma, these kinds of problems. Well, it turns out that West Salisbury is a mile and a half away from this site. Um, the neighborhood is a mile away. And the, it's called a CAFO, right? Concentrated Animal Feed Operation. A CAFO is not a family farm. It's not a farm. It's an industry. And it's an industry that is, is basically a franchise that got out-of-state investors who don't know anything about farming, all they have to do is put the money down, and then Purdue and Tyson say, "Well, we'll show you how it's done, we'll set it all up for you." And then they end up getting, you know, poor immigrants to come to work these things who have no chance of improving, you know, their education. I found it so interesting, the first group who came and talked about education at the Comico County in Somerset, you know, had the most, uh, uneducated people, and it, um, you know, that was where the problem is. So I think it's pretty clear that, you know, the chicken industry, um, is keeping a large, um, population of, of, um, people who are poor. And I don't see that really helping people become upwardly mobile, frankly. Uh, the other thing is, is that, um, you know, you talk about air, you know, air and water, I mean, there's, obviously, you know, being so close to the paleo channel, if not on it, is very scary for everyone, I'm sure. They don't want to be drinking, um, all these contaminants. But the air is particularly scary because these giant fans are blowing all kinds of nastiness into the air, methane, um, uh, which I think there was a lawsuit with Tyson where they actually, um, they measured the air of only two chicken houses, and it was like, you know, the methane was, was through the roof. It was, um, just two chicken houses isn't too much methane. So, you know, it's too close to, to, um, the city of Salisbury. It's too close to an elementary school. I mean, you know, these, these coarse particulates, you know, travel, you know, within a, a perimeter of like, what, three miles? So that includes, um, West Salisbury, that certainly includes the town of Salisbury. Um, you know, I just, I can't believe that anyone would approve this. I mean, who cares about the, the premise? We have to change the way that we look about this. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, so many people are moving in from New York and New Jersey and Pennsylvania to this area to get country air. Country air is not what it used to be around here, it's foul. Um, you know? And we don't want to live in a place that's going to look like New York, you know? I mean, just, we're, you know, miles and miles and miles of chicken houses, and we're all going to be just like the Chinese people who have to wear batting masks all day long, every day, because the pollution's so bad and their government is doing nothing to control it. So, I'm very angry. And also, I'd like to say that, um, the gentleman who said that they were talking to community leaders or that it was public, um, I called, uh, West Salisbury, I spoke to the vice principal and the principal, it was news to them. They didn't know anything about it. It was news to them. And I also spoke to the director of, um, of the, um, Susan Jones, I think her name is, and she's in, she's in the, um, I can speak up. Susan Jones, who is the director of Young Elementary?
Elementary Education.
Yeah, she didn't know about it either. It was news to her. It was news to all of these people who are in charge of our children. So when you talk about being public and informing people, you know, we've gone out of our way to inform people. So, you know, we need to think about, you know, putting, you know, when people, uh, when these, when these investors want to win, want to build a chicken house, how about, you know, informed consent of the people who have to breathe in the air and drink in the water? Okay, I, I'm really sorry, it takes so much time, I'm just very upset about this.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
We're getting the mics fixed.
It's got to be recorded. It's a recorder.
Hello? It's not. Yes, sir. Hello?
They turned, they turned the, the mics are working. He turned down the audio on the speakers in the, um, in the room.
I'll show you.
I'll get him and turn it back up. Craig, if you could turn it back up, that'd be great. Sounds better. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
You fixed it.
My name is Dr. Joseph Inzarella. I'm a practicing, uh, emergency room physician. I live in Somerset County, and I'm here tonight, I drove up because I don't want to see what has happened in Somerset County happen to the good folks in Wycomico County. I'm not a city slicker, and I live on a farm. I live on a farm that's been in my wife's family since eighteen seventy-five. We do corn, soybeans, uh, a couple of our neighbors had a chicken house here and there. But now, we have surrounding us six-hundred-and-sixty-foot chicken houses that are the size of battleships. They have enormous tunnel fans that deliver huge amount of particulate matter, ammonia, hydrogen sulfide gas. All of these things create respiratory problems, they create acute illnesses for people who are normal, and they create even worse illnesses for people who have allergies, asthma, young children. And the problem in Somerset County is that the zoning and planning commission does not get together with the health department, and their concern is only the zoning laws. Well, if it's zoning for agriculture and residential, if it's a hundred feet away, that's what the law says, let them build it. And we've just gotten the health department involved in this, and they were surprised that this, this, this was able to happen. In a two-mile area, we have over seventy-five mega chicken houses. They have thirteen seven-foot, eight-foot fans. You can hear them all night long. Now, I am not talking about a nuisance of noise, I'm not talking about a nuisance of stink. It's there. The problem is if you smell it, there's hydrogen sulfide gas, there's methane, there's ammonia, there's runoff into the water, there's tons and tons of fecal material, there's millions of gallons of water that they drain from the aqua for. So please, look at this carefully. And the big issue is there's nothing in Somerset County that controls the density of chicken houses. How many are you going to put in an area? And how many are you going to put next to houses and developments that already exist? Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for taking the time to listen to us this evening. My name is Rick Green. I live at two eight three two nine Canterbury Drive, and many of the folk that are here tonight are neighbors from the same subdivision, if you're familiar with it, or immediately surrounding the property in question. My particular residence is, is under two miles from the, the property that we're discussing, and, uh, needless to say, we are concerned. The property in question, if one should look at the size of these chicken houses and equate them to the comment that was made earlier with respect to an NFL football stadium playing surface, we're talking the equivalent of eight-point-one-two-five NFL playing surfaces, including the end zones. That's what we're talking about here in square footage, folk. So with that in mind, hopefully that would give you a little bit, something visual to reflect on. Many of us are going to speak tonight on various issues of concern. Some you've already heard with respect to, uh, the good doctor has, has made it very clear. Some of the other issues that we are very concerned about is traffic pattern. The statistics that we have been able to acquire indicate that approximately a thousand to eleven-hundred trucks, buses feed, busing checks in, taking, uh, mature birds out, and the feed trucks, will be impacting Nailor Mill Road and N West Road. N West Road is a relatively narrow road as well. It just so happened that in, within the last week, that one of the police officers who lives in our subdivision noticed an eighteen-wheeler going down N West Road and on approaching Nailor Mill, attempted to turn to the, to the right. In order to do that and make that turn, he had to go entirely over into the oncoming traffic lane, which happens to be on the bend of the road, right at Nailor Mill. That's a sharp corner. So obviously, I'm bringing that to your attention so that you are aware, there is a serious traffic issue there, and the potential for fatal accidents is significant. The two-point-one million birds that would go through this complex is of concern. You've already heard the comments being made here tonight about the, um, the pathogens, the air that we in this, in neighboring subdivisions will smell and breathe, and that obviously is of concern. And since it's been addressed, we'll move on to other things. I'm very concerned, um, as a retired pastor, for people. Understand us very clearly here. Mr. Holloway, Matt Holloway isn't here tonight, so I, I appreciate his comments in the recent article, but I think we have to go a little deeper and recognize that we have here a problem of a significant nature that will impact individuals and families. On the monetary end of things, as well as health, the monetary things we are very concerned about is decreased property values at the time of sale. That would be significant. We are very concerned about that as well. Many of the, the others here will speak to their, different issues, but it does concern me that, to, to read and hear from the state that it's a county issue, and we hear from the county that it, we need to talk to the state. We're asking our esteemed leaders, which are here, to represent we, the people, by taking this matter, by taking this matter under advisement and work with us, and we will work with you. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Maria Payen. I am with a nonprofit. Um, I was called by the citizens who are very concerned about this operation. Um, it is a national nonprofit, and I actually got involved in this, uh, probably over a decade ago. And the reason that I did was because, uh, I lived in a farming area. Uh, we had a business right there, um, with a special exception, and cattle's were on pasture across the street, and the owner sold the farm. We had horses in the, uh, back pasture. and the owner sold the farm, we had horses in the back pasture, and life was grand, you know, farming community, we're all used to that. When an absentee landlord bought the property, they started constructing the poultry houses, and first one went in, then two went in, then three went in, then four went in, then a cattle feed lot went in, then a holding pond 100 by, 100 feet by 120 by 10 feet deep that my house could fit in was their winter open storage lagoon.
Is this Wycomico County?
No, this was Pennsylvania. I now moved to the eastern shore, and the reason that I moved was because of the health reasons in my family. My husband just got done getting cancer treatments, my son was tested for cancer in the spring. When something goes wrong with these operations, it goes very, very wrong. There was a mass mortality across the street, and 21,000 birds died in the middle of summer. No one told the neighbors, and if you can imagine what that smells like in the summertime, it was horrendous, and there were flies for months, and when my child would get into the bathtub after the rainstorms, because their stormwater was directed into my backyard, he was getting palm-sized blisters all over his body at eight years old, and I was rushing him to the hospital. When my child would get off of the bus from school, he would throw up because of the smell. This is not your typical Chesapeake Bay farm family that everyone appreciates, I believe, in the room and accepts. Because of the epic proportion of the size of this project in Wycomico County, I think it gives you as the council members, through your zoning ordinances, I looked into them, some room for requiring something above what normally is required of a one-house barn, one barn or two-barn property. These are investors, this is not only happening here, it's happening in Delaware, and it's happening in Virginia. I can tell you that I have a community in Delaware with 20 houses on one and 12 almost right next to it, and the community is putting buffers around their property because two years, and they still don't have buffers, and reverse osmosis. Some of the wells are already going bad. What I want to stress to you is, I think you have the opportunity here through your zoning to request, I know that you mentioned something about a hydrologist report, and I've, I've called to, I will tell you what I was told as far as the permitting process goes, and I do have a PIA request in. I was told that the ENS plan is approved, I do have that, that's online. The stormwater management plan has been approved, although it is being reworked. However, that's not going to change anything because it's, they don't need a new plan because they're already approved for a level that's higher than that. They need to get the irrigation permit, because there was an irrigation for crops switched over, and they need a CAFO permit, a general permit, and the CAFO general permit includes the nutrient management plan. That does not need to happen before they start building. What you can do is require, if, I was in your position, just from what I know and have been through, we had to close down our business, we can't sell the property, we're paying $8,000 a year to have it sit there. You can require an environmental assessment of the area, environmental impact assessment, which would be very wise to do, because it is over a sensitive area over the paleo aquifer there. You could also request something called a health impact assessment, which actually goes in to the community to find out where is everyone now in terms of children that live there, the elderly that live there, the rate of asthma, COPD, because the young ones and the older people are going to be the ones that are going to be severely impacted. The, let's see, what else I wrote down here? Also, you can, some of the communities have required that ammonia scrubbers be placed on the building as a further protection. Dr. Joe mentioned the ammonia and the hydrogen sulfide, and there are extreme health impacts with that. In Pennsylvania, we recently passed a county health ordinance, and that is requiring UV lighting to kill the pathogens that come out of the fans, as well as biofilters. One of the things that I haven't heard brought up yet, and this is recognized by the public health experts, when you, because of the level of antibiotics that they put into the feed, it causes antibiotic resistance. So the pathogens that blow out were the flies that fly and travel one to two miles, and there have been studies to confirm this, that they are carrying that antibiotic resistance with them. So often you'll see skin rashes in the area where this is, you'll see a high rate of MRSA. So again, I'm, I'm not trying to, I don't think anybody in this room is against Chesapeake Bay family farms, but I think we need to all recognize that this is an entirely different animal. If you go two houses with, say, 37,000 birds in each house, here you're talking about 13 houses with 5.5 changeouts through the year. That's over 3 million birds. 3 million birds. And the sedimentation ponds that they have to hold the stormwater, they're on sandy soil there. If something goes wrong, that's gonna contaminate the entire water supply for Salisbury. You know, I mean, I, I just hope that you use your authority, because you do have authority, and obviously I can see that you're all concerned, I can see it in your faces, and you can see just by the level of people that are in the room that they're all concerned. So, you know, I, I, when we watched the presentation here with, about the real estate and the different projects and the community development, one thing I was thinking when I was watching that, they were talking about, you know, attracting people to the area, and I noticed this is in a light industrial area there. And I know that I've already heard complaints to the gentleman who just bought and is building some businesses there, and I can tell you firsthand that I tried to sell our business, and I could not get a buyer. I had somebody that had a restaurant that wanted to open, they said, Maria, nobody would come to eat here because of the stench, I'm sorry. So you need to think about this, because that's, it's not only gonna impact the neighbors, it's gonna impact the growth, and, you know, use, use the authority that you have and get some protections in there. I think, once it's done, it's too late to undo before disaster happens, so I just urge you to listen to the citizens, work together, and work quickly, and require some things. This deserves some time and a hearing and a public meeting, and I think the time to act is now, because if it sits, it's gonna start, they're gonna start building. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is James Jackson, I live at 1004 North Delano Avenue, Salisbury, Maryland. I'm one mile from the Exxon station going towards Cambridge. My house was built in 1977. At that time, air was good, we were comfortable where we were. Then, the county, Salisbury, we were approved of a landfill exactly one-half a mile from my front door. And now we suffer with the smell of the landfill. A mile from my front door is Naylor Mill Road. And now we're talking about mega chicken houses, one mile from my house. I do not know where the county council lives in relationship to West Road, but I can tell you where James Jackson lived in comparison to West Road, that's exactly one mile. And I'm now getting the smell of the landfill when the wind blows towards West Salisbury. You know West Salisbury doesn't have any fans. And so that smell that passes through my door, through the woods behind my house, it also lands in, in West Salisbury. And now you're talking about a mile down the road from West Salisbury where all the little kids are, you're gonna put this smell? I do, I do think the council, number one, you need some serious input if it means having a meeting at the civic center where the people who are going to be affected can come and voice their opinions, and you also need to be thinking, what district do I represent? And if I represent the district that is composed of North Delano Avenue, there are 26 houses in my neighborhood, 26, that doesn't count Tipewa, it doesn't count Queen, it doesn't count Isabella, I'm just talking about my little neighborhood, North Delano and South Delano Avenue. And that doesn't count my church, which is Western Temple, and the school that is there, and all the houses that are around that, and it doesn't count Salisbury Middle, which is probably a good mile from my house, I could walk there. But the problem is, when businesses come and they want to do something in Wycomico County, we can't do a blanket yes, because we are not considering all of the houses. If you go towards 50 towards Royal Farms, there are developments all around that way. If you go down to Westbury Acres, and if you go towards Centennial, they're all gonna be affected by that smell. If you go towards the Wycomico River, which is Mill Street, that smell is coming, and if you go out towards the sheriff's, the police barracks on Naylor Mill Road, that smell is gonna be there, and all the houses that are on Jersey Road going that way. It seems to me that there are some things more important than how much money the county can make. There are some things more important. And one of the things that's more important than how much money the county can, can bring in is what's happened to my little kids who have health problems, what happened to my older folks who are 60-plus who have health problems, and now you're going to say, okay, we can put these mega chicken houses here, and who knows what's in the air? I do hope that you will listen to what your constituents are saying, and that you will take very, very seriously what is gonna happen to the districts that you represent, because you have to be concerned, you, well, you should be concerned about your constituents. I would hope that the person who is in charge of North Delano Avenue and that section will hear what the constituents are saying. I think it's a really bad move. Thank you.
Evening, councilmembers. My name is Mel Olson, I reside at 28519 Glastonbury Drive. Myself and some family members showed up here this evening to show support for a cause that we thought beneficial here. And at this hour, I really have to leave, so I just wanted to ask two questions. Who in this room is in favor of these chicken houses? And by a show of hands or applause, who wants to see it done away with? Do not commit. I think that should speak for itself. If you can help out the way and all of that, we'd be appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, here's the history, guys. I have lived out there for 25 years. 8005 White Low Road, my name's Ellen Bethel, this is my fourth time coming to this pulpit. I love the area that I live in, okay? I have been inundated by this Deschile dump. I have got this Paleo Channel map embedded in my brain. It is not going away, guys. The Paleo Channel is our God-given resource, we need to protect it. Mr. R. Sample Hughes was in my back pocket the last time I had to be up here, and I'm coming to you, Mr. Davis, I need you in our back pocket. I will tell you one thing, the Deschile dump is still an issue at hand. We don't know what they dumped in it, asbestos, paint, rust going into that, that dump field before they were told they had to put a liner in. We don't know what is already going through the ground at that point, and we shut them down. Thank you, Jesus. Okay, we got number two, the Royal Farms, we tried to shut them down, but the powers that be did go with an above-ground tank system. Why? The Paleo Channel is at the corner of White Low Road, okay? Number three, they tried to put two very important popular people in the county, I am not gonna say their names, tried to put an aqua facility in my backyard with two enormous-sized swimming pools and an outdoor play park for, over top the Paleo Channel. For two reasons, they got shut down. The citizens of Wycomico County came forward, stand firm, come in thousands and hundreds with signatures, I think I had a thousand signatures for that situation. We shut them down because they were the Paleo Channel, but they were trying to change agricultural land into a commercial property. Only the first 500 feet can become commercial property of ag land. Now, I don't know what the requirements are, but it's, I think the county's position to change the coatings of anything that gets placed on the Paleo Channel. Forget the land, yes, we have beautiful, open, wide lands, they're great for business and resources and, and just economic development, but you need to look at where things are being placed, people, okay? Our lives, our community, our children, our future is important, and it's in your hands. Please protect us. You can make a difference. You can make a difference. Stand tall, stand firm, and do not waver. Give God the glory. Thank you.
I'm Charles Wright, 8910 Old Railroad, Hebron, Maryland. I'm gonna wear two hats. First one, I'm Wycomico County Farm Bureau President. We had a meeting on January 25th, and we discussed this issue, and I'm just gonna read what I'm gonna present to you. On January 25th, Wycomico County Farm Bureau discussed the current zoning regulations for poultry operations in Wycomico County. Our board had two members that served on the Delaware Poultry Industry Best Management Practices for Good Neighbor Relations Committee. After discussing and reviewing DPI's new BMPs for new poultry farm construction, the board unanimously voted to request the Wycomico County Council to adopt DPI's new standards to replace the current zoning for new poultry operations in Wycomico County. The board also voted unanimously that same setbacks will be required to adjacent property, i.e. reverse setbacks, once new poultry operations are built. Wycomico County is the second-largest agriculture county in Maryland. Land in this county is Zone A1 for ag use. We believe adopting these guidelines, you'll be proactive towards community growth of Wycomico County's number-one industry, agriculture. Submitted Charles Wright. By doing that, by adopting DPI setbacks, right now Wycomico County is the most lenient everybody on the shore. DPI setbacks, we're worked with, and I'll tell you, I was the one on the committee, and so was Lee Richardson, that we went to DPI, we went to Purdue and to other industries and said, we need to have a cohesive, some kind of agreement between all the integrators so that it's cookie cutter. You know, it's more of a general, we, everybody can You know, it's more of a general, everybody can follow the same rules. And we helped initiate that partially because people like me and Zeke and his family, we're the ones that defend ag. I mean, that lady says she moved here September, my family moved here in 1688. I'm from Wycomico. I know. But I'm just telling you, you know, we've been here. I've been here. I farm. That's what I do. So, we would like you to take theirs and then adopt it for Wycomico County. That would give 400-foot setback minimum. The buffers are definite on the property. Those things will be done through regulation. There's nothing wrong with buffers. It's like, what is a good saying, a fence makes good neighbors. So, I'll hand these to you. And then, now I can speak as Charles Wright, a farmer, my family's got two CAFOs. When you sit in here, I understand fear, the unknown. But when I sit back there, I'm insulted. Because we put up four chicken houses in 1993. I'm a CAFO. I'm a farm, which you, ma'am, said, farm or Chesapeake? She's from Pennsylvania. I'm a Maryland farmer. I'm a CAFO because I've been required to be one. We got two CAFOs in Maryland. We put out 720,000 birds a year. Y'all know where I live, know where Rex Market is? That's me. If, I must be the man of steel. Because I've been growing chickens for 21 years. I'm in them. I pick them up. I raise them. Those, those houses have fed my family. When I put them up, the goal, that was going to be part of our operation, diverse. And I put them up to be that. And they're going to get paid for, they're going to pay for my kids to go to college, and that's what they've done.
Are they going to pay for our health? We have to go to the hospital?
You got a order, please?
There's some issues been brought up tonight that aren't all necessarily true, and you all can look into them. But I want to know, my son's 20, be 23 in October, graduate NC State. I want you guys to tell him how he can run it, how he can, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with this project.
What should you do?
Excuse me. What, what can he do? When I, when I bought a farm that's in the A1 district, correct? I built my four chicken, we built four chicken houses. I bought a farm across the road, 130 acres with money I earned from that. Then I put it in ag land preservation. And I've got a development of 40 houses going behind me. Working on it, plantations. It's there. The man that owned it, that was his property. He bought it under guidelines, and he went through all the hoops. I was in a meeting, a hearing on it, and the man asked me, Charlie, are you with me or against me? I said, it's yours. If that's the guidelines, that's what it is. And that's the biggest waste of land in Wycomico County there ever has been. Forty-two houses on 300-some acres. But that's his. And I get put up with those kids coming on my property. I get used, on the backside, I had all my friends over, had a dove patch about there, and we dove hunted. Well, I can't do it there anymore. So I just moved it. Because I bought the farm, and I've acquired other land because I work hard. But we have to be careful in what you're going to tell us we can do and we can't do. It's A1. It's ag. I'm, you know, you're, I'm a CAFO. Zeke back there, him and his family, they have CAFOs. That's a technical term that's been put on us. I want to address the runoff, this poisoning of the water. Where are the chickens? I just want to break this, chickens are in the poultry buildings. The manure is in the poultry buildings. In our operation, manure is taken out, in between cleanouts, put in the manure shed, or then, or taken to the field and spread. Depends on time of year when they're cleaned out and all that. There's, and the birds are composted. The newest thing that'll be coming, just say with an operation like this, I'm sure they're going to be looking at freezers. You worry about mortality. Freezers are the new, becoming thing. All the mortality is put in the freezer. Freezers are come, picked up by a company, and they go to the rendering plant, just like whatever's left from the poultry operations. So those, those are just a few things. And we talk, the smell. My son played baseball at Salt, West Salisbury Little League his whole life. And if it's blowing east, there's smell there. And I had a woman on the bleachers with me one day that was raising cane about the chickens. I said, ma'am, that did not become from a chicken's behind. That's from the wastewater treatment plant. So we have to be careful how we're all pointing fingers, because we all have issues, and we all have smells. Just want everybody here to be informed with the truth. There's no seven- or eight-foot chicken fans on a chicken house. There might be 13 four-footers, but there are no seven-foot fans on chicken houses. There's a lot of things been just thrown out here, and I know it's a lot of emotion. But now, one last thing I want to finish up with. Why do we have bigger chicken houses? Why are people putting up five, six, 10, this case maybe 13? You know why? Demand. No.
Green.
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 These are investors.
You also, hope, hope, hope. Not all of them are investors. I've got, I've got a friend who's putting up six. That, it's, it doesn't matter. He's putting up six, trying to put up six in Dorchester, and he's going through the same process. He's 30 years old. He's 30. He's, it's what he's doing for his future. They farmed their whole life just like we have. A lot of this has come from the same environmentalists right here getting y'all riled, riled up. Stormwater management plan right now is same for the poultry operation as Bill Walmark. You want, you want chickens that are going, chicken densities are going down in houses. Density's going down because they're using, everybody wants antibiotic-free. They're meant hormones, chickens don't have long, so that don't matter. So your density's going down. And that's causing, so you get less chickens in a house, but you still need the same amount of birds. So you're going to have a bigger, larger houses and more, so you got more houses for less, less birds, basically. I'm, just a little note, they're going to eat 1.3 billion chicken wings on Super Bowl And they need this demand. We can say some, there's investors and everything. And I've heard some things that are pretty, pretty embarrassing really for the area. Some of, you know, they say, it's okay for me because I'm a family farmer. But some, I hear, I mean, I didn't say it right out, they're not proud enough to say it. Now, they're, these, these people are foreigners. And they say that. We're all foreigners except for the American Indian. Understand your fears. Do I really want 13 chicken house farms? Maybe not. But I, you have to be careful, very careful, what you ask for that's going to affect somebody like Zeke's son about there, during the chicken business. If he wants to add on to his farm, all of a sudden now, he might have four houses, he wants to put up two more, well, that's six. What's, what's the threshold? That's what you, that's what I ask you to be careful about as far as us on the ag community. That's what I got, John.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
I'm Thomas Lilly. I live in Whitehaven, Maryland, and I try and be as brief as possible.
Thank you.
I've had cattle. I've, I've been a farmer or tried to be a farmer. I know it's not a very tough thing to do. I know times are changing. But you know, Wycomico County's done quite well without these mega farms, and I think we can continue to do well without them. And I've heard some exceptionally interesting testimony from some of you people here tonight that I thought was right on point in a lot of different areas. And I, I know the council's listed, listened, I know it's getting late. But the health concerns that I heard, and in view of what we're talking about here, I think are very real. I don't think this is anything anyone's imagining. I don't think there's a whole lot of exaggeration here. I think it's something that you and the council, to carry out your responsibilities here, have to weigh very carefully and investigate very carefully. One thing I'll say real quickly about chicken farms and mega chicken farms, I was involved with the poultry industry about 35 or 40 years ago, when they were phasing out the double-decker chicken farms. All of a sudden, the, you know, people had built those things all over the place, and all of a sudden, the industry decided they weren't efficient. And what they did ahead of time, of course, is they built a lot more chicken houses. And when you build a lot of new chicken houses, somebody gets knocked off on the other end. And they'll say, this isn't going to happen, but it will happen. They'll eliminate the less efficient producers, who could be your neighbors. It could be you. It could be your neighbor who has a couple houses down the street. All of a sudden, those little houses are not going to be efficient enough. When these big operations come in, believe me, the company looks at the numbers. And these things can produce stuff so efficiently, like the dairy farms out in Iowa have 5,000 cows, and they put thousands of little farmers out of business. It's the same thing. So, I think you have some options here. It's a, I don't know whether you're going to consider this an emergency health situation. I think you could, if you looked into it. A moratorium could be a possibility. Obviously, the zoning code needs to have a special exception for these type of operations. We're an agricultural county. We depend on agriculture. But I don't think, Purdue is a fabulous company. They are very environmentally friendly. I know they would work with you in establishing a limit that the county can work with after studying the health issues. I know they will be respectful of the community. But something needs to be done by you to stop this operation until it can be studied, and you can make a necessary health decision, et cetera. I think you can do it. I think where there's a will, there's a way, and I hope you find it.
Hi, my name is Michael Auger. I'm a teacher in the county. I live right in Salisbury, in the city. I'm an environmentalist. I work for the Parks Service during the summertime with the CJC's. I have gone through a bridge in the watershed training, Alice Ferguson's training program, talking about the watershed. So I have a little bit of knowledge of the watershed, and I work for a lot of integral rights activists, along with PETA, which some people might not like. Just the environmental impact, like the doctor said, the health reason why, that stuff, it's, it's not good. Farms these size are not good. You just Google it, you'll find the information yourself. I don't have to tell you that. All these people have been saying the same thing. You go do a Google search, you'll find the impact of these mega factory farms, as a factory. And that's, I think, the zoning-wise, this is not a farm, it's a factory. This is a whole different area of farming. In Europe, they actually ban CAFOs. You know, it's just a health problem, and the toxic waste from it is so bad, they don't allow it. I think it was 1995 in North Carolina, everything was all set, the farm was up and operating good for years. Fluke, something happened to their store water management, and all contaminated water washed into the river, killed millions and millions of fish, blew the river, just accident. You know, stuff does happen. Look at Michigan. It wasn't planned, they didn't plan to put the lead in the water. It just happens. Accidents do happen. So you best well out plan, stuff still happens. And to me, being a teacher, I, I teach at West Salisbury Elementary. I teach the schools, elementary schools around. All of those kids are my kids. The air they breathe, I'm concerned about that. The lives, they live here on Wycomico County, I'm concerned about that. And being an environmentalist, I'm concerned about the land here. This is a unique ecosystem here. We have bay, we have the ocean, we have the grassland, marshlands. It's not really set up, I know we do chicken farming here, but it's not the best place for it. If you ask about, what can I do besides chicken farming? You go to the farmer market, go to the CSA, you try to buy a membership in the CA, they're sold out. They're sold out. You can't get, if you're not there quick enough to buy a membership in the CSA, you're sold out. You can't get your fresh produce. You can go there and get their left, no, have left. So to me, all right, get rid of the chicken farm, do something more productive, something more sustainable. This county needs to look at sustainability. CAFOs are not sustainability. That's basically, you're going to put a dead zone in Wycomico County. And once you have that dead zone, the businesses is not going to come here. Kids, families are not going to send your kids here to go to college. The college, the whole community is going to collapse. It's going to collapse. And that's just my concern. And again, you can Google, you can look at the information. I would just like to see maybe new legislations, like new health organs passed. That can be done. And really look at our zoning laws, so we don't have to come back to this again. That's okay. I think for people to come, for businesses to come, for people to survive here, you really have to look at the environmental impact. You got to look at our streets, you got to look at our community, and what we can do, what we can do to make it better. We always look at, what can we do to make the business better here? What can we do to make the environment better here? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.